Numbers much since then, we tweaked them a little bit here and there based on changes in those things, but for the most part, those numbers have stayed pretty significant. So, the real point is, how did we get from? Came in at actual savings of 392,000. Commodities, we were projecting savings of 322,000 and that number came in at 711,000. Contractual services was 562 and we came in at 1.3 million dollar savings. Capital outlay was 176 and that number came in at 331. And interfund transfers, we didn't anticipate any savings, but we did save about $25,000 on that arts and humanities transfer. So altogether, that increase to the bottom line from where we were projecting back in, from the March 31st. The increase is about 1.7 million dollars on the expenditure side. On the revenue side, we were looking at decreases, so we were projecting back in March with the March financials that we would see a decrease in sales tax of about 2.1 million dollars. When in fact, we came in 650,000 dollars ahead. So the net to, the increase to the bottom line was about 2.7 million dollars for that. CARES funding, we didn't have a projected increase or decrease because we didn't know it was coming, so that's about a 1.1 million dollar increase. Property tax, we expected to go down about 685,000, but it ended up going, being down about 260,000. So that's a 425,000 dollar increase to the bottom line. So from the revenue side, we had about 4.275 million dollars in increases to the bottom line than we had projected back in March with the March financials. So in summary, that gave us the 1.7 from expenditures, the 4.3 from revenues and it's so. Roughly 6 million dollar increase to the bottom line from the original March projections or March 31st financial projections that we did back in April of 2020. So one of the numbers we wanted to look at, because this was a huge decision point for you and for, you know, had, had probably the most effect on, on services and the city in general, was the personnel savings. So in full-time savings, we recognized about 1.5 million dollars in savings. Part-time salaries, we anticipated about 830,000 originally, that number came in at 780,000. Overtime, 330,000 dollars in savings, but these are all from the original budget and I will give credit to the PD for this, when they changed their schedules to 10-hour schedules. Their savings alone was about 200,000 dollars. Longevity, we had a little bit of savings, the rest of these are benefits that would be provided to, as related to the, some of the other expenditures. The leave buyout one, which is kind of confusing is we budget, um, HR's budget for. Buyouts that aren't expensed in the department, at the department level, so this is kind of the wash for any of those that aren't expensed in the department level and we did not use about 264,000 dollars of that. In looking at salaries, we, we had to kind of just try to figure out, well, why did we have those? Well, we know work share and furloughs were a huge part of that. We know that overtime reduction was a lot of that, but what, what we also noticed was that we had a lower overall staffing levels. So the table on, on the right-hand side, on the upper right-hand side compares the 2019 general fund staffing levels. To the 2020 general fund staffing levels by quarter. And if you look at the third, we would anticipate the second quarter was down because that's when we were, we had all the furloughs and all the, the work share. But still in the third quarter and the fourth quarter of 2020, we were down 13 positions in the general fund. Um, so that's a huge amount of money of savings that we were, we were getting because of those positions were, were not filled. The other big savings that we noticed that, um, from the numbers before were in contractual savings. We weren't changing these projections because as I mentioned, um, departments had the authorities spend this money up to the point that they had told us previously. Um, that they were going to reduce that budget, um, so we really were not comfortable going any lower than that. So what we looked at was the top 10 categories in contractual services, um, that generated the one point, I think it was 7 million dollar savings on the prior pages. Um, of that contractual, other contractual was the highest savings number of about 243,000 dollars. Um, and looking at that, animal services and municipal court were, um, big contributors to that. Agency contracts for transportation, this is the 202,000 dollar fourth quarter payment from OCCK. Employee development, which is not a surprise, we had halted all, most, most training was canceled due to COVID. Um, but that, that number came in high and then the rest of these kind of just show you as a list of where those top 10 fell. In the say, any overall savings under contractual services. So this slide is one that we've been showing you all along and it just kind of shows us month to month where we, where we were sitting at the time that we actually provided data. So at, for example, as a period six, which would have been June. We were sho, we were anticipating a net income at the very bottom line of 10.8 million dollars. Of course, we knew at that point, we didn't know really what was going on. So these numbers are just providing us a month-by-month view of what we're seeing at the end of the year. Um, which gets us to that final net income number that we're showing today of 5.9 million dollars. One of the, something that we discussed over and over was sales and use tax. So the next couple of slides are the slides that we've been looking at over and over, um, since March. Um, kind of comparing where our sales tax was coming in compared to where we would have anticipated it to come in based on the three-year average. Uh, three-year average was 2017, 18 and 19. So, um, for example, as you can see in this, um, spreadsheet, the sports, sporting goods, hobbies and musical instruments came in at 123%. Higher than our three-year average in November and 104% higher in December. And so those numbers kind of tell us where the sales tax numbers were peaking and where they were down. And these are not surprising numbers to us, um, as we know travelers, traveler accommodations was down, um, 78%. That's probably higher than we anticipated they would get by the end of the year. Um, but they are, that is still significantly lower than what we've seen over the past three years. Um, so overall, we, we saw ups and downs, what we did see, um, this is the sales tax side of it. What we did see was on the use, um, tax that those numbers were increasing significantly, um, from prior years, so. Um, that's really what kind of took us over the top from some of these reductions. That original one was, this, this should be pretty much the same slide because we're now comparing this, instead of this yellow number being what we anticipated based on the prior year. This is, this number's not even on this one, so sorry. Um, these numbers are the same numbers on both slides, so this is just when we were doing our COVID projection. We were anticipating, for example, th, this was the number I was telling you. Back when we did our original projections, we thought that the, um, traveler accommodations would come in at about 60% of what they orig, what they had previously collected. And on this schedule, as we can see, they came in at 78%. So those numbers did come in better than we anticipate, anticipated. Um, so that just kind of gives us a comparison of what we anticipated those would be in our COVID projections and what they actually came into be, um, at the end of the year. These are the graphs that I think really show the picture, uh, much easier to look at. Um, so basically the green lines on these are what we originally budgeted. The blue line is what we came in at as our actual year-to-date total for 2020 and the red line is what we were projecting at, during our 3031 financial statement COVID projection. So as you can see, for property tax, we were just a little bit under what we originally budgeted, but we were well over what we were, uh, projecting in the COVID scenarios. Motor vehicle tax came in pretty much exactly where we budgeted, um, but still higher than what we were projecting in our COVID projections. Franchise fees, um, came in about the same as our projection as our, our, our year-to-date, but below what our original budget was. Um, these two spikes, just for your information is, we originally, um, budgeted that transfer of franchise fees from utilities in November. And we did it in, in April, so that's really what that flip-flop there is, just because that's a, that's anomaly in this, in this graph. EMS, um, came in both below the original budget and below COVID projections. As did municipal court, sorry, lost that. Um, it too came in well below our original budget, but it did come in a little bit above what we were projecting originally back in March. And I will say that after talking to municipal court, something that helped them was the stimulus payment. Because they did say they did have people that would come in and pay off some of their debt because they got that extra payment. So I think that helped them get to that number. Sales and use taxes, you can see, came in well above what we originally projected, um, and above what we originally budgeted. Something that's interesting is, this is a 10-year, um, actually it's a four-year, uh, month-to-month collection of sales tax. So what you can see is our sales tax is pretty flat, it's not, for the most part, it's not going very much. These spikes are really cyclical based on, um, times of the year when there's higher spending because the February time is the holidays. Um, and usually the August, September time is back-to-school time, so those numbers are typically higher in those, those numbers. But these are the numbers that are going crazy is the use tax and if, you may or may not recall, back in October of 2019. Um, the state implemented collection of use tax on computer sales. And so that's what we're really seeing here is that collection of, of use tax on computer sales. Um, that's helping drive our use tax numbers up. Now granted, they're a pretty small proportion to what our, our sales tax numbers are. Um, so the dollars aren't significant, but the percentages are fairly significant if you look at those. So this is just a really, a recap of where we, item by item, where we thought these items would be and how they finished out, uh, based on that information. Um, from the year-end to the 3031 financials. So as I mentioned earlier, we had projected 39 million dollars of revenues, we came in at 43 and a half million dollars of revenues. We noted that our property tax, sales tax and revenue was up, our EMS fees and charges and interest, investment income was down. Um, the comparison is, we were down, we were up about 400,000 dollars in property tax from what we projected in, on the March 31st financials. We were up about 2.8 million dollars from what we projected in sales tax. We were down about 180,000 dollars in EMS. We were down about 58,000 in fees and charges and we're down about 100,000 dollars in, in investment income, which that number should go down a little bit, not significantly because we have not posted December number yet. On the expenditure side, we were originally projecting, uh, back in, on the March 31st financials. Uh, expenses about 39.4 million dollars, we came in about 37.6 million dollars. Um, we came in below on personnel, commodities, contractual service and capital outlay, pretty much every line item except for other expenses. Um, but. So in the personnel services between the contract, between the projection up in, in March and the actual was a difference of about 250,000. 160,000 for employee benefits, 390,000 for commodities, 767,000 for contractual services. And 156,500 for capital outlay. So that's the general fund, does anybody have questions, comments? Want to talk about that or you want to just keep going through and then we'll talk about everything at the end?
Fine with plowing through unless someone has a question that they'd like to ask now?
Okay. So then we took a look at all other funds and we have, we've tried to provide this information, but we haven't, we haven't provided this monthly, so this might be a look at some of these that you haven't seen for a while. Um, the arts and humanities fund, this, uh, total ending fund balance is without the transfer. So as you can see, when we make that 517,000 dollar transfer, that's going to bring, should bring that fund up to about its target fund balance of 100,000. We originally budgeted a loss of a little over 20,000 dollars, um, due to the, the revenue reductions from the River Festival. Um, we came in at a, a net loss of about 467,000 dollars.
But that 20,000 dollar loss included transfer, is that correct?
It did.
Right, so that's, those two numbers are really, oh, just looking at 20,000 with the other 466,000 is a little bit misleading.
Yes.
One includes the general fund, one does not.
Right, right. Yes, if that revenue wasn't here, that this number would be 665,000 dollar loss, that's true. But we also didn't have a lot of the expenses that we would have had with the River Festival either. The sales tax capital fund, this should have been the, the page that you got emailed this morning hopefully, um, because there was a typo. On this one, uh, in the budget column, we had this number duplicated, so it was showing that we anticipated 16 million dollars in revenue, which is, would have been great, but it's not accurate. Um, so in the sales tax capital fund, our revenues came in just a little about 365,000 dollars over what it did last year. Um, it did come in about 300,000 dollars over what we budgeted. Um, the 176,000 dollars of other revenue was FFNE projects that we did through the sales tax fund. Um, in expenditures, we originally budgeted about 8.2 million dollars. Uh, with the reductions of projects that we did, that number came in about 5.5 million. Leaving a net income of about 3.4 million dollars in this fund and a fund balance of about 5 million dollars. The thing we want to note and remind you is of the things that we canceled when we did this. Um, the reductions in the sales tax fund were, were broken out like this in capital planning, 50,000. Buildings and facilities, 30,000, vehicles and equipment, 900,000 and streets, about 1.5 million. This list on the right-hand side is a compilation of these two items, building and facility and vehicles and equipment. So those are items that we chose not to do in 2020 because of COVID. Some of these items, probably a lot of them came back up on the 2021 request, so we might be addressing those now, but some of them didn't, so we might not be addressing those in the 2021 budget. Um, the other thing we, we have to remember when looking at the sales tax capital fund, because we think we have 5 million dollars in there, is we do have a lot of. Promises in the, I don't know what word to use, it's not really commitment, but it's a, it's a promise that this is what we're going to spend this money on. So I wanted to show you what we have budgeted in 2021. Um, we have streetscape debt, we have river renewal debt, we have river renewal projects coming that we haven't even financed yet. We have 3.9% to economic development. We have Pinewood Cove maintenance that we've obligated. We have, um, capital equipment that we, we normally budget about 930,000 dollars. We have streets improvements that we budget at 3.2 million dollars. We have, uh, buildings and facilities maintenance and CIP planning that we budget at 370,000 dollars. We have parks maintenance projects for 500,000 dollars. A hike bike trail for 50,000 dollars and the general fund tax stable is the stabilization of about a million dollars. Um, so that's just a reminder of where we are for 2021 in that fund. The other thing that I thought was important to remember is this list is a list of, of vehicles and equipment that was requested in 2021. That was not funded because we didn't have enough budget to do so. And if you look at that, that number's about 1.8 million dollars and this, that's one year of vehicles and equipment that either were brought over from 2020 and not purchased. Or did not get funded in 2021 because we only had 930,000 dollars to, to work with in that fund. Um, so I just think it's important to realize that we have a lot of, um, equipment and maintenance that needs to be done. Um, that we may want to look at addressing with some of the surplus, but that's a discussion we'll have here in a bit. Sales tax economic development fund, um. Did fine, it's, it's got a revenue of about 700, 7,000 dollars, we anticipated it to be a loss, but with the, um, reduction of expenses in this fund. We were able to come out with a little bit extra, fund balance of 750,000, uh, is the target, we ended up with 715. I will say, we do have a couple of projects in this fund that have not come out yet. Um, possibilities of coming out of this fund with the, with the Schwanz projects. Um, I just wanted to note, because there was a significant difference between the expenditures in 19 and 20. Uh, we did have some expenses in 19 that we don't, we won't repeat in future years unless we approve them as, as standalone item. We did have some expenses in nineteen that we don't, we won't repeat in future years unless we approve them as, as standalone items. The next slides are really pass through slides, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on, on Business Improvement District or the Tourism and Convention. The only compare, the only note I will make on Tourism Convention is that you can see the revenues are significantly down from last year. About six hundred thousand dollars from what we collected last year. And about the same from what we budgeted for last year. And what's paid out is exactly what is, what comes in for that fund because it's just a pass through fund. Special Parks and Recreation, because we did not spend very much on the, in that budgeted line item, we still, we didn't collect as much as we normally would. But we, we are still able to increase that fund balance to four hundred and sixty five thousand dollars at the end of the year. Special Alcohol, this is a fund that is also a pass through fund that goes to special parks and goes to some of the alcohol rehabilitation services in the, in the community, so this one's just a pass through. Special Gas is one that we transferred several projects into this fund from Sales Tax when we weren't sure where that fund was going to end. Because this fund had a, had a one point eight million dollar balance at the end of 2019. We did end up doing a budget revision on this fund. So when we revised our budget, we, we came in under that revised budget of about two hundred thousand dollars. Our revenue did come in higher and that, the reason for that is because we had, we got a significant more, a significant amount more revenue from federal fund exchange dollars than we had in previous years. There was about four hundred thousand dollars more than what we normally got in the previous years. Like I said, we did take several larger projects out of this fund from the Sales Tax Fund. Neighborhood Parks is another, these are funds that we don't, we don't really do much with unless we have specific projects that we are geared toward a specific neighborhood. The Parks Department does look at projects that they could do out of funds in that project. Tony's Pizza Event Center, this one's a little deceiving because we did receive the hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for, for upgrades from Spectra. And so that's showing in the revenue, but I also took that out of the bottom reserve for, I took that out as a reserve for capital improvements from the fund balance. So that we wouldn't think that we had that money in there to spend or to buy things that we might be looking at buying for this fund. You can see the contractual, the expenditures are higher than what it was last year by about fifty thousand dollars. And that's directly related to the reduction in revenue because we reimburse them based on their net revenue versus expenses on a month to month basis. So when the revenue goes down, their expenses go up. And this one too, that I mentioned earlier, will probably have to do some sort of transfer to this fund in 2021. Depending on how things move back up and they're able to start planning and, and getting programs back at the Tony Pizza Event Center. Sanitation Fund, revenues came in just a little under or over what we did in 2019. A little bit under what we had budgeted. Revenues came, or expenditures came in a little bit under what we had budgeted, as well as a little bit under what we had done in 2019. They did participate in work share, so that, that's a significant amount of that. And also, we delayed the automated trucks, so there was some capital outlay purchases that were not done in 2020. Leaving this fund balance about two point one million dollars at the end of twenty nine, or twenty twenty. Solid Waste, revenues came in under what we actually collected in 2019. A bit, a bit above what we budgeted in 2020. Revenues came in about half a million dollars less than what we anticipated, that again was in capital outlay. There was a lot of equipment that we didn't purchase because of COVID. We postponed those purchases, leaving their fund balance at the end of the year about five point four million dollars. The Golf Course, we originally budgeted about nine hundred thousand dollars of revenue, that came in about six hundred and eighty thousand. And it also came in about two hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars less than what we had collected in prior years. The expenses came in under what was budgeted also and also under what was previously spent. However, they did, they did come into a negative net loss position. With their fund balance originally a little over twenty one thousand dollars, that left them a negative forty seven point five thousand dollars fund balance. So we did transfer a hundred thousand dollars into this fund so that they could at least get to the point where they could have cash flow for the first few months of the year.
Deb, has that, uh, uh, transfer been affected already? Is that already out of the general fund?
It is. The, the transfers are out of the general fund, but they're not in the other two funds and, in these reports.
Okay.
Because I wanted to show you where they ended up. Water and wastewater, revenues came in a little bit under what we collected before and, and under what we would have anticipated to collect in our original budget. Same with expenditures, came in under, those two were, there were some labor and capital outlay projects that were not included. Oh, sorry, went to the next page. I wonder those numbers didn't make sense. Leaving them with a net income of about two point eight million and a fund balance of about fifteen million dollars. Central Garage, revenues came in under what we received last year and so did revenues or expenditures. But they were able to, to maintain a fund, a net income of a hundred and fifty nine thousand. Added to their beginning fund balance of a hundred and fifty four thousand, left them with a fund balance of about three hundred and thirteen thousand at the end of the year. Workers' Comp, we budgeted four hundred and fifty five thousand in revenue. We transferred four hundred and forty nine thousand in revenue. Expenses were three hundred and seventy thousand, we had budgeted four hundred and thirty, so that was about a fifty thousand dollar difference or sixty thousand dollar difference. Leaving this fund with a net income of about seventy nine thousand and an ending fund balance of a little over a million dollars. The Health Insurance Fund, we've talked about this fund multiple times. Revenues came in above 2019, below what we originally budgeted. The expenditures came in below what we had budgeted and significantly below what we had incurred last year. We've had a, this conversation about whether that's due to postponed medical care or what that is. But in the end, it, it allowed this fund to, to recognize a net income of about a million dollars. Leaving the ending fund balance of about three point two million dollars. The Bond and Interest Fund, this one's a little deceiving in what, when you look at the numbers. Because we did do, we did have a refunding in 2020. So in the net proceeds, the debt service proceeds revenue. We have about one point one eight million dollars of refunded bonds. And in the debt service, we have the same number of payouts that we paid off the old debt. We did talk to the auditors about how to, how to present this information, how to post this information. We've had some conversations about maybe splitting that out so it's a little bit easier to see. Maybe creating a line item for refunding revenues and refunding expenditures. What I noted back in early November when we were doing amended budgets was that this created a, a budget overage to what we had originally budgeted. In conversation with them, their, their response was that because it was a refunding, it would not be applied to the, the budget. When they look at the budget to see if there's a violation. So with that one point one eight out of the seven million dollars, that brings our revenue, our expenses down to about five, five point nine million, which brings us under our budgeted number. This is going to be one of those transactions that could be changed during the audit process, so we may look at that. I don't, it shouldn't change the net income effect because the revenue, the expenses were exactly the same. Leaving this fund balance with about one point six million dollars. What I wanted to note was, as part of the accounting process for projects. When a project is completed and closed out, in the project fund, we do, we have to do a reconciliation to make sure that we funded in the revenue side enough money to pay for all the expenses. Which sounds simple, but it's not always because there's a lot of issuance costs and costs besides just project costs. So once we get that reconciliation done, we'll have to do, we may have to do some adjustments in, into the debt service fund because they're all funded through the, the debt service fund. I added this graph because I've had this question asked to me multiple times as we talk about these things, where our unemployment is. As you can see on the top graph, our, our unemployment rested somewhere around three percent, a little under or above three percent. Until we got to 2020 where it went above nine percent today in May. Or in November of 2020, it's just below five, or right above five percent. So I think we're seeing, still seeing some movement in that, but it certainly has not come down to where we were pre-COVID. So this is something we still need to be cognizant of and be aware that these numbers could change. I mean, it, it's going to, it's going to affect us for a long time.
That being said, that unemployment number certainly came back a lot faster than many of the predictions that we were hearing early in the year. You know, some of them were saying it was going to stay at that eight, nine percent level for the indefinite future. That's what helped us.
I would guess that unemployment is significant in the, like the travel and the entertainment, wouldn't you say?
There and even in the utility fund for payments of utility bills, property taxes. Yeah, as far as the sales tax, I think that's probably the highest because it's probably the most, the area where people could let go of.
Yeah, I, I think Commissioner Hoppeck's referring to who, what sectors are experiencing unemployment.
Experiencing it, yeah.
Oh, yes, yes, I would agree.
Yeah, because we've got pent up employment requirement now, I mean, we, we need, I mean, there's companies out there looking for employees, so.
Right.
Well, you know, one point that Eric Brown with the chamber makes is, as a, you know, as you apply that percentage to the number of individual, employable individuals seeking work in Celine County. It may sound like a high percentage, the actual number of, of people searching for a job is not that high relative to, you know, the openings that we have that we're trying to fill in the community. But I think it is related that, and you have unemployment in one sector and then may not be transferable to another.
Right.
I did read that too, that the, the accommodation sector was one of the hardest hit sectors with the employment numbers. The last thing we wanted to update you on was where the Starbahn district ended at the end of the year. So this slide shows what our collections were for 2020. The number, the number in this call, this row is what the state collected for state sales tax. This is the base we were trying to meet. So as we collected money, we got to the point where we've collected more money than we, than the base. So in November of 2020, we were actually sending money or holding money for the Starbahn district. Same with the local tax, which in these numbers include both city and county. They made an adjustment in October because of a calculation error. So in October, the end of September, the beginning of October, we were actually able to send money to the, the district. All in all, we collected one point seven million dollars from the state over a base of one point four million, leaving us a balance of about three hundred and twenty five thousand. In local taxes, we collected about four hundred and ninety eight thousand over a base of three hundred and forty eight thousand. Which left us a, a surplus of about a hundred and fifty thousand. We also collected twenty one thousand dollars in transient guest tax. This is off the hotel downtown only because that's the only thing in that district. And it didn't open until late July or something like that, so that number, we would have only collected one quarter worth of payments for that transient guest tax. As compared to what we projected in the revenue study back from 2018. We collected about sixty three percent of state sales tax, sixty two percent of local tax and about eight percent of transient guest tax. The important thing to remember is these larger entities didn't open until late in 2020. So we, we were hoping that those numbers are going to move to the left so that our numbers are going to be meeting the baseline earlier in the year. But this kind of gives you kind of a, a half year or less picture of what was happening, what happened when, once they did open and in COVID, so that kind of gives you those numbers. This is just an overview of where everything stands in the Starbonds. The schedule here is what's on hand at the trustee. The Cityus Line has about eight hundred and eighty six thousand dollars still sitting there, the majority of that is for the offsite parking for the field house. The hotel master developer has their funds still sitting there. Waiting till they submit their cost estimates. The car museum has about three point four million. Stiefel has about two, two hundred and forty seven thousand dollars and the hotel for the infrastructure has about a million dollars. So there's about six million dollars left at the trustee in project funds. And I believe that those have to be submitted, I'm thinking off the top of my head, I think it's October of 2021. I'll have to double check that though.
And, and the significance of showing that there's nothing in escrow is that the escrow conditions have been met, they've been released by the, the trustee. So they're available for distribution if, once the other requirements are met.
Correct. The Sales Tax, the, the state collections actually sit at the state until the trustee requests them for, for debt payment. So currently we have three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars sitting at the state. We used a little portion of that from 2019 to pay off a payment in twenty, uh, twenty. The debt payment, the debt funds that we still have sitting out there, the capitalized interest account has been utilized for payments to this date. The debt service reserve account has about one point four million dollars in it. The other two debt funds are really just the funds that money goes in and out of for debt payments. Required payments for 2021 are nine hundred and four thousand dollars. In incremental tax, we currently have about five hundred and two, it's the three hundred and twenty five from the state shown here. And the hundred and ninety five from the, the county or the city tax that's sitting at the trustee.
Something I noted is, and you're just, you were just about there, is the, the fact, the payments required in 2021 are, is that nine hundred thousand dollar number?
Yep.
But there's also a five point five million dollar balloon payment coming in 2030. And that works out to about a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year obligation. That by 2030, we're going to have to have covered somehow.
Yes, that's true. So this table is required.
I'm sorry, just so I understand that, what you're saying Commissioner France is, we've got the nine hundred thousand dollars in payment obligations for this year. But if we're looking ahead, we should be putting another, we should be adding another half million dollars to that in anticipation of the 2030 obligation.
But certainly we would hope that would happen, obviously upfront, early on, you might be a little short of that. But a little short of it upfront, then you've got to have surpluses in the back half in order to meet that, meet that. So that's something, you know, to carry as we look forward. Because if we get to 2029 and we don't have that money, the payment's still coming due.
Thank you.
And, and just to be clear, it's a, it is not a full obligation of the city. So then there's also provision for, if we're unable to make that payment, deferred payment or missed payments and that goes back to the bondholders.
Okay, I got you because we didn't underwrite the bonds. Okay.
Right.
Correct.
Thank you.
So that's what this table really just shows us that, that the required payments are interest payments only until we get to 2030. As Commissioner France said, I wanted to note here what had paid those. We used capitalized interest for the first three payments, four payments really. We used some incremental sales tax and transit guest tax. Anticipate using the balance from the incremental sales tax from 2020 for the sixth June first payment. And then hopefully by the December first payment, we'll have the remainder of the 2021 incremental tax. or 2020 incremental tax and some additional 2021 incremental sales tax. And this scenario does not touch the, the debt service reserve of one point four million dollars that I showed on the previous screen for any, for these payments. So that's kind of the hope as far as where we go with this. But we'll continue to update this and, and provide this information as these payments become due and as the, the debt, the sales tax comes in. This is just a continuation of payment, just to show you when those actual principal payments do become due in thirty, thirty-two, thirty-five, and thirty-eight. That's a lot of numbers and there's a lot of information there, so I wanted to leave plenty of time for conversation, questions, comments, further information.
Trying to see if I can expand my view so I can even see who's on here. There we go. Welcome, Commissioner Ryan. I don't, I didn't have enough viewing boxes, so I don't know when you were able to, to, to join in. But do any commissioners have questions, comments?
Commissioner Dave, one question. Are we anticipating that any future funding increases for the general fund balance would be minimal in the next few years compared to last year's? I don't want to call it a windfall, but unexpected increase?
Right, go ahead, Debbie.
I was gonna say, as you can, as you can see by what we budgeted in 2020, our margin is very small in the general fund from what we anticipate to what our expenditures are. And I don't anticipate, unless there's future stimulus money that comes along, which there's talk, but we have, there's no confirmation on that. We have not typically been able to budget with a lot of cushion.
And, go ahead, go ahead.
I guess I would add to that. I don't know how many years running we've attempted to budget to have five hundred thousand dollars of net income to then apply to our, our general fund balance to reach our target. So I think some of the first things for us to talk about, we don't have to make the decisions today, but talking points going forward are that fund balance, what's the appropriate fund balance? What we deferred in 2020 that we wanted to pick back up? And Debbie spoke to that to some degree. I mean, obviously, we park and rec programming and mowing and maintenance are, are things that we made a noticeable reduction in in 2020. I don't know in the general fund that we deferred anything, you know, that, that was overly harmful. Now, on the sales tax side, Debbie touched on capital improvements and vehicles and equipment, those type of things, as well as, you know, kind of the street projects. So I think we, we probably want to talk about picking those back up. And then I think that leaves some funds that were unexpected that we can factor into our strategic planning conversations. And, but I don't, long-term, I, we, I'm encouraged by the, the sales tax growth. But again, the question is, is that atypical because of the stimulus money that came into our economy? And if we get back to normal, our typical year is very much break even with not a lot left over.
Right, and have the contractual services that we saved on last year, have they been reviewed to see how many of those savings can be ongoing? Or did we just bite the bullet last year and get by on bare, bare minimum?
Yeah, now that we've finished the year, we, we started with the, kind of that overview that Debbie provided, but we have discussed diving into greater detail and trying to identify where those savings were and whether we can continue those on both contractual services and commodities. Some, some things were most definitely, you know, something that we just was foregone for the year. We knew we'd have to get back to, but if we can capture any of those savings, we'll definitely try to do that.
And so that's where you anticipate some strategic planning discussions coming into play in terms of what we're going to go ahead and fu, restore the funding to? And, and, because I know that, I know that you've been particularly concerned about the fact that we don't have any kind of a replacement cycle for a lot of our equipment. And the thing that I, I don't want to happen is that we do realize it's kind of this one-time windfall, but then we just put ourselves further and further behind in terms of what we've, we've got to buy in the future and what we've got to do to upgrade our fleet in the future.
No, I, I completely agree in it. Unless we can identify a few things to carry forward on an ongoing basis, a lot of this is one-time. And so as we make decisions about its use, we need to bear that in mind. And vehicles and equipment is a recurring expense that we struggle with. We're looking at other options completely offline of, of the 2020 numbers that maybe we can make some headway there. But in terms of the strategic planning discussion, I think it's twofold. One is, are there opportunities to continue those savings? The other is, if we're comfortable that we do have some funds that could be utilized, then where do we want to utilize them as really kind of a one-time expenditure?
Gotcha, thank you. Anyone else? And do we have any members of the public that have a question? I don't think I see anybody on here except for commission and staff.
I, I know in the background, staff's been struggling a little bit with some functionality, but I think Lauren Driscoll, looks like she's muted. And I know Jacob Wood has been providing some support remotely as well, but I'll defer to Lauren and I don't know if Jacob's still on the line or not to see if we have any public. Lauren is shaking her head no while muted, and so I think the answer is no.
You know, I, I would like to make a couple of comments. I think it's very, uh, it, we, some of us, that we have a very deliberate conversation about how to proceed with this. We're obviously, you know, we obviously took some pretty drastic actions last spring in response to some pretty drastic outlooks for the future. And we're fortunate that those did not come fully into play. And that puts us in a good position now in terms of moving forward. But I think we need to be very careful and deliberate about how we approach that. I do think we need to have the conversation eventually, and depending on a little bit of how the pandemic goes about, you know, summer program restoration under, under what conditions. And if the pandemic is such that we think we can do that with maybe some extra precautions, I would certainly be in favor of doing that at least to some level, even if it may cost us a little bit extra to do it in, in order to just have the programs again. Obviously, if pandemic stays out of control and we keep having high levels of case counts, we're not gonna be able to do that. But I think that's something we need to keep, uh, keeping our cap. I will say, and I don't want any of you to faint that away, but I am pleased to see the golf course results. I mean, I know we had to supplement it, but, you know, given the conditions, I think that they did a pretty good job of managing the resources they had available. And I see Brad here, I think our team managed to do the same. The fact that we have to supplement them less than we would in a normal year, I think is, is, is a, should be a feather in their cap. So we, I know we had some employees that worked very, very hard to make this happen. But those two independent funds come to mind, you know, and of course, the general fund people also kicked in in a big way. And as a result, we're now in a position of being able to move forward with maybe a little bit more flexibility than we would have had had we not taken the magnitude of action we took last spring. I know it was hard at the time and, and, you know, it was upsetting to a number of folks, but, you know, I would rather have, be in the situation we're in than be looking at a two million dollar fund balance and thinking, oh my God, how am I gonna deal with this?
Commissioner France's comments remind me that, you know, we're not out of the woods. We'll still have to see how this plays itself out. And you may, you may have already seen that we're advertising for lifeguards at Kenwood Cove. And the timing is such that we need to get started on that. Well, staff's working through what that might look like if we have capacity limits. I don't, and, and to some extent, whatever extent we can practically enforce social distancing. So we, i- if that is the model, then we would most likely be operating Kenwood Cove at a deficit in 2021, just to be able to have it open. Similarly, you know, we've had some conversations about the fieldhouse and, and we'll see what the pandemic brings. We, I think as we compare ourselves to our peer communities and as our, our citizens and constituents compare ourselves, we have been very conservative in terms of our operation of the golf course, our operation of Kenwood Cove, our, our financial approach. And, you know, we're, we're seeing the results of that financially. As Commissioner France said, we've got some flexibility rather than find ourselves painted into a corner, so. But we'll, we'll continue to monitor, you know, we're, we're having conversations and you should see a study session on your agenda planner here in the, in the near future to talk about the River Festival, what that might look like in 2021. Brad and his staffer did a great job making a very hard decision in 2020 and they're out ahead of that whole conversation again. So we'll, we'll continue to monitor and, and assess.
Thank you. Anyone else? If, if not, I guess that we will be adjourned early and we'll see you back here at four o'clock.
All right, we didn't know how much conversation, so it sounds good.
Okay, thanks.
And we'll just turn off cameras and, I mean, stay connected, but just turn off the camera and, and sound.
Yep, and I'll mute everybody.
All right.
Oh, thank goodness.
If, if anything breaks down, go back to that same link and we'll restart, but.
Gotcha.